Call the meeting to order. Will everyone please rise and face the flag? Mr. Ordey Klein, Your Elegance and Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any extras?
Nope, nothing's changed.
We have three scheduled presenters, and I was thinking about moving Ann down to be our third. That way we would take part in our first two within the confines of the room here. And then we'll visit Ann's classroom after that. So, the only thing we're waiting on is possibility. John will be here.
He's coming. On his way. He thought it was 6:30.
So I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown with that one change.
I make the motion.
Motion by Kurt. Seconded by Rob. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, first item under scheduled presenters is the Ed Foundation Benefit Auction Recap. Who would like to take that over?
You're down, I'm right. We both left. We had about 200 people there. Hundred and two bidder numbers were given out, which was a few more than last year. The auction brought in about $30,000 before expenses. And of that $30,000, about 4,200 is designated to Amy Donbeck's special project. It was a good night. I think everyone had a good time. It was well attended. Any questions?
I think it's the robot, trying in the extra crowd.
Yeah.
And Ann Davidson won the subbing event, so that'll be kind of fun.
Yep.
Got to get back in there some more.
That was a nice addition. We had a couple new game, or a new game, Punch Your Luck. We also did Roller Coaster and... There was another game. Um, Plinko. Yep. So, everyone seemed to stay entertained. Works the room. Lots of nice donations. We thank the community for all their donations.
You know, based on the bidding numbers, it doesn't wane in enthusiasm from the community, does it? It seems to be just as popular this year as five years ago.
Right. Attendance-wise, yes. This year, I think Rod can attest. It was a little harder live auction-wise. It felt like we were not as engaged. Now, that could be the sound system. That could be the night. It could, you know, virtually it could be any number of things. But dollars, it doesn't show that way because we're about where we were last year, so.
And I think during the live auction it went well. It was when we got to the asset donations where we really need people's attention, it was hard to get their attention.
Yeah. Right. That bar area fills up really well.
Yeah.
And it's hard to hold attention.
It's probably been, um, this is probably the fifth venue, I would guess, that it's been. Is this a good marriage?
Is it the fifth venue? The second, I think.
Yeah. Mill Street for a number of years and then out to the golf course.
And elementary school for two years. It was at the old elementary for two years.
Really? Before my thing.
And it was at the Edgewood.
Really?
Really?
I'm dating myself.
You know, there is one or two possibilities of some new locations opening up in Cannon Falls next year. So, I do feel like sometimes the golf course does get a little tight. So it would be nice to have a little bit bigger facility. So, that's kind of in the back of our minds, is to check. The golf course has been wonderful, generous with the location, not charging us a fee for that or... As well as the advertisers, they've always been very generous. So, we'll just have to see what else kind of opens up in the next year.
Very nice plaza out there.
And I might say too, I mean, I work with, I do a lot of these auctions all over and they do a great job. I mean, you put a lot of work into it and the community supports it. I think the first year I was the auctioneer, I think they were around 5,000, and now we're over 30,000.
Thirty, right.
So, you know, they're doing something right.
Right, right. And the community just, I think it just goes to show that the community continues to support such a great organization and are always willing to give to that organization, so.
Anything else for anyone?
I just, I sit on the committee and see all the work you guys do and thank you to the Ed Foundation for everything that you do. I think it's not an easy, I mean, there's a lot of work that goes into it. It's not just the auction. It's the fun item at the football games and the other golf events and all of those things, so guys do a nice job.
Thank you. Thank you.
The only thing I have is, I just kind of printed out the, um, what we funded the last few years.
Oh.
If you'd be interested in seeing where our money goes every year. There's a couple of years of information on there. The last two at the bottom are the ones we just funded at our last meeting in April, which we spent all our money. We're done till July, so.
If I could, if I could ask.
Yeah.
How do you go about making a decision on how much money you spend in a given year?
Um, it's usually what we raise at the auction.
In the fall drive.
In the fall fund drive. Um, but now going forward, it's changing a little bit because of the gift we got from Elaine Wilcox. So it's, our budget will be double going forward. Usually it's been about $37,000, and I think we plan on doing maybe $75,000 or $80,000 a year. So, just by taking some, by keep, by doing the things we're doing, keep doing them, and then taking some of the interest off of that gift every year, so.
Just a win-win for the school.
It is, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Shepherd Center. Rob, would you like to give?
Sure. John's here, so I'll stall until he gets his little computer thing set up. But, uh, no, John is the immediate past chair of Shepherd Center. And Dick is going to be the incoming chair. So Dick Mensing is also a member of Shepherd Center. And just want to thank the school for your support over the years with Shepherd Center. And John's got a little presentation he's going to give, and you got to set that up. And I just briefly wanted to mention before John gives his presentation, one of my favorite programs is Book Buddies that we work real close with the elementary school. And Thursday is our big wrap-up of Book Buddies. And this is where we have Gordon. Well, if you don't know about Book Buddies, once every week, every Thursday morning, volunteers come in and read to the first graders. And I don't know who likes it more, the volunteers or the kids. They both seem to love it. At the culmination of the year's over, so we've got Gordon Frederickson coming in. He's a Minnesota author. He writes children's books based on agriculture. And he does a great job. Those first graders are spellbound. So, I wanted, if the board, any board members want to come and take it, and it's really fun. It's going to be 8:30 Thursday morning, and we'll do the presentation. And I look back, the last three years, Shepherd Center, we spent just over $5,100 improving this program because that's how much we believe in it. We bought all the books for the Book Buddies. We bought a cabinet to put it in, so that's used only for Book Buddies. We bought some books for the classrooms. And then what the neat part about Thursday is when Gordon Frederickson is done with his presentation, we order hardcover books that we give to every first grade student. And he autographs them. So we hand them out and, so it's a great, it's one of my favorite programs. I love working with the teachers and principals down. So, come Thursday if you can, it's a lot of fun. And John, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Jake, you're right. Just tell me when. I'm Jake Potts for the audience. But, uh, I'm John Holbert again. I know everybody here, I think except a few people. Todd here at the school, 24 years. You guys probably remember. And I left the day before, so. Jerry's on my sports teams. Kurt, you know this guy very well. We thought I'd give you just an overview. I think you've probably heard of the Shepherd Center, but what are we all about? So, if you go to the slide. This is our Board of Directors. You can see right now, their names are up there for you to take a quick look at. I recognize a lot of people you might know there in our community. They're real active individuals. And they'll be serving for this year, 2017. And Rod, Rod said I was past chairman. And Dick is going to be coming on here next year. Joyce was going to be here this evening, I guess she couldn't make it. Okay, next slide. Uh, there's our directors. Of course, we found out some bad news today, or this week. Twyla's leaving us. She's moving. So we're losing Twyla. So we're in the search now, or will be, for a new executive secretary. So if you know somebody.
I'm administrative assistant.
Administrative assistant. Okay, this is our program. We basically operate everybody in three different areas: education, fundraising, and service. You can see all the things are listed under there. And I won't go through all them today, but you can read your handout at a later time. Okay, next one, Jake. This is currently our setup for our committees. We're real organized. I think we use, we use parliamentary procedure and are pretty good at that. And we run through our committees. And everybody has a job, and then we work together to put it all together. Okay, next one. Okay, education programs, kind of, various learning. We do that several times during the year. You can see there, we have some real interesting topics each one. Our first one this year, Keith Myers and Mike Dalton spoke. Mike spoke about the beacon, and Keith talked about his baseball career. So it's really interesting. Next one. You probably heard about this one. Last fall, we put together a program in honor of all of our Vietnam vets here in Cannon Falls. And that's a picture of all the guys that were at that presentation that day. It was a wonderful program. Book Buddies, again, Rod already spoke about that. We, this is one of our core programs, and we're really enthused about doing this every year and trying to improve it as time goes by. Education programs, we do workshops, a lot of them. You can see some of the anticipated ones this year. Facebook, smartphones, iPads, Blackberry Android phones, genealogy. We're going to, that's going to be one of our core ones this year, is that genealogy one, where people can learn about their history and put it all together. We're going to teach them how to scan things and put it in a PowerPoint and come up with a good package. Day trips are real active too. We do a lot of things here, everybody. First one coming up, May 31st, we're going to Twins game. We do that annually. You can see other things coming up there that we'll be doing this year. Game days, we have a lot of things going on for our seniors here in Cannon Falls. And we really appreciate the use of the CCC. We want to thank the Board of Education and the superintendent schools here for giving us that opportunity. We use it. And that pickleball program that you've probably heard about has really been growing. And you can see the other things we're trying to do too, a lot of different things. We're going to start a biking program. Glenn Schultz is going to help us with that. We got a table tennis, now a table tennis table, and we're trying to get that going, a lot of other things. The next one. Walking is a big thing. The CCC is used for that. A lot of our seniors, they can't go outside because they're a little in balance, you know, or things like that. They like a flat surface, so that really works out well for us down there. Next one. There's our pickleball program, it's really been growing. We have 40 to 50 players that play through the year. Next one. This is one that we're just starting, well, this is our fourth year, everybody. We're getting better every year. Practice, I thought we looked really good. But we play against the Northfield Senior Center, the Fair Bowl Senior Center in Oatana. You can see our schedule for this year, 12 games, play on Tuesdays. And Jake's been gracious enough to book us into using the diversity softball field here. So we're playing all our games here back at the school. 10 o'clock on Tuesdays, if you're free, come up and watch us play. Next one. Fantasy football, we started last year. It's just kind of getting off the ground, it's popular. Next one. Uh, group travel. This year, our group is going to Colorado Springs. That's our trip in September. You can see all the things we're going to see out there. Quite a trip for about $750 for the days that we're gone. Next one. Triad, of course, is very popular. That's working with your police force locally. And that's been a really successful program that's run by Rosie Schluter. And she does a wonderful job in coordinating that for us. Next one. Service, things we do, we have open houses down to school, so we've shown off the building down there. Get people to come in the building and see what's going on. Summer concerts are another phase of our thing. We like to have a pre-concert every year down at John Birch Park. Next one. Meals on Wheels. I don't know if all of you even knew that we coordinate that through the Meals on Wheels program here in Cannon Falls. All the drivers, our seniors that are active in our program down at Shepherd Center. This has been, was it two years, Rod?
I think about two years.
About two years. We brought this back two years ago. We are struggling with that one a little bit, and then we, we can only survive if we have sponsors for these ads. So we're in fact, be talking about that this week if we can continue it or not, so. Text preparing, we do that for seniors here in Cannon Falls down at the Stone House, but we do all the scheduling. Shepherd Center Health Fair, we usually have a health fair every year. Down at the, the high school here in the area there, you can see. Additional service projects there. You can see other things that we do as far as service to the community. Fundraising, how do we survive while we have concerts? You can see all our different concerts we've put on over the years. You notice the one in the upper right-hand corner. I don't know if any of you were there that night?
Beth was.
I was.
And we had to shut down that night. Beth had a big decision there. Family Fair, we, or Econno, we get the receipts, so that's one way we bring money into, is through the receipts. So, if you don't have a place to drop those, drop them off at the Shepherd Center. Other fundraising programs, you can see the things that we do to survive. We operate about on a $35,000 budget, about, or is that about right?
Yeah, it's probably higher than that.
A little bit higher than that.
Hey, bud.
That's kind of gives you an idea. So any kind of support we can get there is great. So again, a special thanks to Cannon Falls School District, Board of Education, for your continued support of the Shepherd Center. Community seniors do appreciate your support of senior center goals and objectives, making their lives more positive. So, encourage you to give back to the Cannon Falls community. Since I retired, I've been pretty involved with this for six years now. Thank you very much.
Joyce is here.
We have any, Joyce?
Yeah.
Stand up, Joyce. See, Joyce is our president or chairman right now, so she runs the show now. Anybody have any questions? General things.
I've got a general question or two. The membership, how do you, how do you dictate membership, or how does membership begin? Do we?
There is no membership.
So?
It's open to everybody.
People come in as they want, as they view what activity you have and want to take part in, so.
And you know, we do charge a fee for some of the activities, but I mean, there's no membership at all. So, you don't have to become a member of it.
We do charge $25 to play softball. That's how we buy our equipment.
Yeah.
Uh, we charge $25 a year for the pickleball program. That's how we buy our equipment. And replace balls and things like that.
You have been so successful through the years. I just thought maybe there's a, a growing membership in your involvement. Community involvement is just excellent.
It's open to everybody.
Would you say, oh, would you say? Would you say it's growing? I mean, there's no membership. Would you say there's more interaction and getting more in there? Is it kind of steady and all, same as always is or?
It's growing, uh, because we keep adding new programs a lot of times. New things to draw people in, you know, things they'd like to do.
Getting different interests. So it's not like pickleball expands every year from 50 to 75. It's opening up more stuff.
It grows a little bit.
And some things you might try, and if it doesn't catch on, we'll just continue.
Another thing we're looking at is in the next 15 years, the senior population in Minnesota is going to triple. So it's, it's a big deal, you know, to try and keep these programs active and to continually look at new programs to expand.
We applaud the school board for making the CCC into a community building now.
Lot of activity down there now, every day.
Lots of things. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Next, we are going to move to a site within the school. We're going down to Ann Davidson's classroom and take a look at showcasing education foundation donation.
And I brought Emma Shapursky, she's one of our eighth graders. And I mentioned that I was going to come to the, talk to the board this night, and she was interested in joining. So, she's going to share her perspective. So if anybody's got questions or anything, she's got a, a good voice too, so. She's here. We're a team. I don't know what to do. Can we just go down there, single file line? And, so the Ed Foundation paid, yes.
You wanted to start the story from the very beginning?
Uh.
Do we have time for that?
Yeah.
We start.
Paulus?
Okay.
We talked about, at the Ed Foundation fundraiser, Ann and myself talked about, we talked about her room a little bit. And she, this is really a story that comes, goes along with the layout and the tables and chairs. And I'll let you start from the beginning of how this all transpired.
So, there's this website out there called News ELA, and none of us really know how to say it. So that's what I go with.
Newsella.
Yeah. Why is it, okay, never mind. We'll talk about that later. And we like this site because the kids can read articles, and they're, they come from Associated Press, newspapers from all over the country, and then they rewrite them for reading levels. So I can have, I can have somebody at a second grade reading level and eighth grade, and I can have people at post-secondary. And we can all read the same topic. And one day, a student came to me and said, "I'm going to be gone tomorrow. What are we going to do?" And I said, "Cry because you're not going to be here. That's just a joke. That's supposed to be funny." And, um, so I said, "Well, I'm looking at a couple of these articles." And she chose the one on flexible seating. And so we all read this article, we filled out graphic organizers on it, and we had our thoughts. And we started thinking, "Well, what's this all about? And could we ever have a classroom like this?" So, I don't mean, if you're not ready for this, do you remember kind of where we went from there?
Um, we kind of just started with like a persuasive letter unit, where we were originally learning how to write these kind of letters anyways. So we were thinking more into, okay, if we actually did something like this in our classroom, what would we want it to look like? So we started out with like, we took blueprints, basically. We like made our own blueprints of what we wanted our dream classrooms to look like. And we like went through and we threw out all the ideas that were like impossible, first of all. And then we kind of started thinking, like, if we actually did this, we would want this here, we would want this here. We started arranging rooms. And then we made PowerPoints and showed them to the class to present our ideas, to make sure like, this is what we want. And we weren't even sure if we were going to do this for sure or yet. So we had to do a persuasive letter to the Ed Foundation to make sure they would let us do this. So we had a persuasive letter writing unit, and we all wrote our letters to the Ed Foundation asking, we like collaborated to make this big letter to the Ed Foundation, asking, "Can we get these chairs? Can we get this wobble chair? Can we get this, these tables? Like, can we get this stuff?" And then we mailed it in, and we were kind of nervous because we didn't know if they were going to accept. Um, but they just kind of, they accepted, and then we got all of our seating, and we just kind of moved it around how we had pictured in our blueprints. And I think it's helped me out personally, allows my focusing, because I like to fidget a lot when I'm listening. So, I think it's helped me learn better.
What chairs do you like to sit in?
The wobble chairs.
And the wobble chair, oh, I don't know.
Sure, I like it.
So and actually, that chair, we read the article, and then it was in the fall. This all started in the fall, November maybe. And then it was the Give to the Max Day, and the person who won the drawing for, if a tea, I don't know the details. Your name is drawn, you can choose a teacher, and the teacher would be given this money. So we were given, I think, $125. So I came back to the students, I said, "I know what we're going to do with this money." And a stool like that is $119.
Whoa.
It's a, the name brand is HOKKI, H-O-K-K-I. I haven't ventured out yet to try the, the less expensive ones. I just wanted to, you know, when you're buying for a classroom, you need to buy for sturdy, lasting for eighth graders. And that was really nerve-wracking. I'm like, I don't buy tables. I don't know how to do this, and I just was afraid that I just bought like either cardboard desks or like Barbie-sized desks, and they're all going to come in, and I'm like, "I messed up on Amazon." And, um, so that was the first thing. And it was like, the, there's so much to it in that the kids are learning how to be in here as students, and I'm learning how to be a teacher in here of students in here. And, and it's, it's amazing, but they owned it all. I didn't know where, I've never done anything like this. It's considered like the inquiry-based education. It's like the things that we're supposed to be doing, but you can't just like say, "I'm going to do it this day." It just has to fall into place, and you need to be ready for it to happen. And I'd get to the beginning of the day, and I'd say, "You guys, I don't know what I'm doing. I mean, I know what we're doing, but I don't know where this is going." And it never failed. Like, at the end of the day, at some point, the light bulb would go on, whether it was my own light bulb or another student's idea, but it was such a collaborative effort. So, in and of itself, it showcased the, the, our key words were like 21st century learning area, where students can be flexible and collaborate and creative and all those fancy words. But they did it. The kids did this. I was just there saying, "Yeah, you can do it." And honestly, I told them, this was, this all started before the Ed Foundation was given any of that wonderful gift. And I said, "I don't know what we'll ask for you guys, but whatever you end up asking for, you will get something." Because I knew, I hope that doesn't sound wrong, but because of what they were doing, what they're asking.
Talk to the process up from where you started to the end product.
Uh, I wrote something, but I don't know where it is. I wrote, I wrote, uh, if you know that, there's a children's story called If You Give a Mouse a Cookie. Well, I wrote, and I gave it to the Ed Foundation. I don't know if you guys have gotten it. Um, but if you give a class an article, they're going to read it. And I have this young man in my class, and he's always with me, but I don't know. He's, he's just there, and he wants to do his best, and, and I go, "You guys, I have this idea. If you give a class an article." And he goes, "They're going to read it." And then I said, "And if they read it?" He goes, "They're going to get ideas." And so this thing that I wrote, I tried my best to showcase, you know, if you, if you ask the students, "What if?" They're going to do this. And if the students are allowed to do this, then you're going to have to do this. And it's, it, it was an amazing process that I would never be able to replicate exactly, but I hope something else will fall into my lap where I can say, "Hey, let's give this a try." It's empowered them. And these things aren't toys. They are teaching them what, how do you learn best? These are, these are tools and not toys. And it's not a fun thing, it's a, what do you need? And sometimes it's a, just today, there was a student sitting on one of these chairs. Tippy, 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 floor on the floor, I'm so tired of that. And all I did was, and the green stool was available, and I said, "I need to sit on this one." And he goes, "Yeah, I do." And then he was all over the place, but it was supposed to be that way. So it's just, they're learning. They're learning to take control of their, of themselves, to be aware of what they need, and that they're, that what they do in the classroom has real consequences. And consequences can be a really positive word, can't it? And they did it.
Emma, I think one of the big things, and you can, I'll probably speak for the principals here. Um, as you went through elementary school, you were really used to this kind of environment.
Yeah.
If you remember from the tour last week, you see a lot of different learning centers in elementary school. And Emma, coming through all those channels, you saw that. There's a lot of flexible-type learning going on at the elementary. And so there's a lot of research saying that when they move over to middle school, we're putting them in an environment they're not used to. Uh, rows of chairs and rows of desks are something they typically haven't seen.
They call that cemetery seating.
Right. And so, um, you know, what we're really trying to do is take the concept from the elementary that we know really works, and schools have been doing it for years. We're trying to bring that up to the middle school, see how well that goes, and then eventually, you know, take that to a high school level. Because even now at college level, and Grant, you'll see this when you get there as well, you know, there isn't libraries where you have to be super quiet, and you can't have a drink in the, in the library and things like that. They now let you take coffee in and things like that. So, learning environments have just changed. So, learning environments have just changed all the way through and we need to stay and be an active part of that. Um, so the terminology that you hear a lot of is flexible learning. And so I think this is just a really neat example of how we can take kind of an elementary concept without making it sound a lesson. Emma's shaking her head because she knows what I'm talking about. There are always little different pods in your elementary classroom and, and different learning centers and now you're starting to see that come up through the middle school. So, really thankful that the Ed Foundation, you know, kind of took our concept and said, "Let's, let's give these different environments an opportunity to kind of grow." It also gives us a chance to test, a lot of times, you know, you want to test out furniture and, you know, what if it isn't quite right? Um, there's some groups that say wheels on the bottom actually help because there's some easy movement if you were to switch quickly. On this, the teacher still has to move, but because it's the triangle, you know, she can group things in different concepts, you see the numbers on there, she could say, "Okay, all the twos get together." And that's a really easy thing to do, even the other day when I was in here subbing, um, it was really neat to say, see the kids like, "Okay, I'm gonna work in this group" and they just were able to get up and move around really easily instead of winding their way through different, um, rows of desks, so.
Since last Thursday or Friday, just seven, after seventh hour, I separated these, but basically we had, I call them, I call them like boardroom tables. So these four and those four were together. And the students, they did, um, they were researching naming traditions in various cultures and there were eight groups and they did reciprocal teaching and learning and so it just set up nicely and I said, "Okay, west is gonna stay here and east are gonna rotate." And it's just, it gives us so much, I'm taking pictures every time I come up with, or, I, now you don't usually because I am so, have a problem with spatial order. The kids helped me set it up and we take a picture every time so we can go, "Okay, that worked." And state testing, we had a really cool setup that was very, as, as nice a state testing can be. It was in here and it was, it was kind of, dare I say, a bit refreshing.
What'd you say from a, both a teacher and a student, um, standpoint, if I could get your opinion on this? What has been the toughest and the easiest change going from cemetery seating to now this 21st century, you know, new classroom experience?
Um, well, I'd say, I gotta start with the easiest, but um, it'd be, I think the transition is the toughest because we're so used to up and down rows and just facing one way and now we just kind of have this freedom to go everywhere. And it's kind of stressful at first because you don't know what's gonna work, what's not gonna work. And then the easiest is definitely getting the comfortable chairs because everybody wanted to get out of those desks. So getting into these chairs is like, brought the pressure, it was really nice.
And for a teacher, is like the toughest part, like students paying attention since, you know, there's a lot of students having their backs to you, or they probably turned for the assignments or are they chatting?
Oh, I got them right, I got, just kidding. The easiest part, I don't know if you noticed, but I don't have a desk anymore. So I got rid of that because I was thinking, normally this, this is all been my spot and I'm like, this is, I shouldn't have this much space, I'm one person and this could be more. I'm working on getting more things out, but it's a process. So, this is my desk now and so that was surprisingly easy. Um, I'd say, these kids have, they own it and so I feel like the, my style has to change, it has to be a lot of reminders and, um, you know, it's a lot of phrases, like it's a, it's a tool, not a toy when they're bouncing three feet up in the air and I, that's why I limited these because teacher can't handle those. Um, but it's, to me, it's the conversation and what you're showing them to be the norm. And that, it sounds like it's difficult and maybe some days when I'm stressed out it might be, but in general, it's been a really great transition. I think I'm interested in seeing what it'll be like when the students aren't, they don't own it like these guys did. This is, this, their ideas came to fruition. I just don't know if other kids will come in and say, "Yes, the way it is" and kind of take it for granted, but that's okay, well, I'll teach them early that, what this is and how to be in here and it'll be, it'll be awesome. When did you start this setup? What was the day we got back from our field trip? We went to, it was the end of March. Oh, okay, so it hasn't been that long. No, it was a Friday and we came back from a college field trip and our stuff was in and nobody wanted to go back to class. Emma did, but I said, "No, honey, it's okay, you can take a break." And so all the kids, they just, it was just like bees, just, "Wow, take it to..." Nothing like a couple of eighth graders who want to help.
There were people running through the hallways, the chairs, everyone was just like, "Slow down, slow down." And we're just like, we were setting up our new room.
Yeah.
And it's really cool with these because in my opinion, it's way easier to move these tables than it was the desks. So we can kind of change the seating arrangement whenever we want to, like whatever we're most comfortable with, we can just change it whenever and I think that's really nice.
For what we're feeling that day?
If I can just interject for a quick second, that stool over there that you guys were talking about? We have, the Ed Foundation has, um, given.
Two, two separate accounts, I think sixteen total chairs to the special ed department down at the elementary school. And then, um, just approved recently.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four to the second grade team, who will use them, you know, they're not gonna go all to one teacher, but they're gonna be dispersed amongst whatever teachers need them in the second grade, so.
So the students created, came up the idea, correct?
Yeah.
Then, as a unit, they all basically designed what, what they're looking for?
I drew this up here earlier because it started like, no idea, you know, don't shut down any idea. You never know where that'll go and then it got to be where, okay, no iguana, no chocolate fountain, no book vending machine and no.
Fish tank.
Fish tank. I didn't say that, I said, "Okay, you do some research and tell me, there are classrooms that have these and there's scientific support that says it, it enhances a student's learning to have that in the classroom." And then I never had to say no to the iguana. And so then, and then we, we had, they did PowerPoint presentations based on these groups who wanted to do what? Like, "We're gonna research chairs, we're gonna research fidgets, we're gonna research tables." Some people researched storage. And, um, from there, we, I started using, uh, Google Forms really well to get an idea of what students, like, you know, you could talk about chairs all day long, but if everybody only wants tables, then we're wasting our energy. Those Google Forms really shared information with, um, everybody and it wasn't, I was able to show them that I wasn't dictating at all, it was their peers were, um, guiding and, and had that voice. And then right around here, I said, "Okay, you guys, I gotta do this, I can't make it a lesson anymore, I gotta..." And that's where I researched and did the, the writing of the, the proposal, but everything from there was these guys.
You can, to the aspect of asking for the donation, correct?
Yeah, they, they were like, I did a Google Form, "How much should we ask for?" And then I did some research on things and I'm like, "You guys gotta up it a little bit because you want me to get you anything good." But they're like, "This, this amount." I said, "Oh, you're so cute, you're so cute, are you gonna buy our classroom erasers?" Yeah, we gotta go up, we gotta go up and the number that I, the six thousand dollars that I, I go, "This is what I'm doing, you guys." They're like, "Nah." They all thought I was ridiculous, I said, "They'll, what's, they, they can say no, they can say no." And they didn't. And I say thank you so much and my students appreciate it so much, it's changed their world and mine as well.
I'd say too, because I'm, I sit in on the Ed Foundation meetings and the Foundation was very impressed that the students put this together. That it was coming from them, I think that was a factor.
It was.
The approval. Yeah. Good job, you guys.
What's, sorry, I got another question, what's the process for like seat selection, since I know.
Oh, you gave me anxiety, that's the tough part.
I was the aggressive A, and I would be the first one in class, so I was getting the swivel chair. So how do you, you know, or how, what's like, what have you figured out, since I mean, you know, this is your first year with it, you're trying to figure it out, but what have you guys figured out to stop the infighting, you know, trying to steal the good seats? Like, "I want this couch."
That's what that sign is for.
Yeah, so we have like signs around the room for who gets what. And we started out with just a couch and a wobble stool, I believe. And then we got these and we're just kind of like, "Okay, if you had it this day, don't take it the second day." And it's kind of been a, I don't know, not necessarily a free-for-all, but like you can decide who gets it and if you've had it, be honest, let someone else take it. It's kind of worked out that way, there was no fighting.
There've been days that I've walked around and I've noticed that, um, the, the exercise balls aren't being used. And, you know, you'd think they were, you'd think they'd be like rolling over them to try to get them and it's, and they'll, they'll give one to another person and unless people are really angry on the inside and I'm not noticing it, it seems to be pretty peaceful.
Yeah.
I don't want to talk about it anymore, it makes me nervous.
The wiring guys are waiting for us to.
We should maybe, oh, do our conversation down there, I know they're, they're waiting on us to get out of here before they can move on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don't talk about being done.
I didn't mean to rush anything, it's just I know that guy when we walked in, he was like, "Wouldn't it be nice to know about this?" I'm like, "Sorry." Because we could've walked a long way.
Isn't that just typical and just what, uh, we're looking for at the Ed Foundation?
Very cool.
Enhancements for us. Okay, we're moving on to reports and communication. Student rep, Grant, what have you got for us?
All right, this one, it's a little bit light on the sports since we're kind of, you know, halfway through the seasons and, you know, it's not the beginning or the end. But so kind of going on with the academics, this is the last week of AP testing. So students are trying, you know, finally finishing this all up as that hectic time gets done. Um, this Wednesday on May tenth, we're having the walk to school annually, so some of the high school students, part of NHS and High School Student Council have been asked to walk with the kids and adults and police and firefighters there to kind of, you know, "Oh, cool." You know, it's, "Police officer, we're getting escorted to school." So that's cool for the elementary kids and us to have a fun time.
And I remember you guys get to hand out water if you would like to come up at the end. I think Laurie sent you that email, didn't she?
She didn't say we had to hand anything out, she was like, "Just to walk."
There you go. Walk.
And then also, um, prom happened, which is always hectic for the school district and, you know, for the entire school in general. And I'd just like to say thanks for the staff at the prom committee and also for everyone that made it smooth and hazard-free. I know my dad heard from one of his coworkers that Wanamango, they have a lock-in afterwards to try and, you know, stop the students from going out. So that means instead of some students who go to bed right away, others have to stay up till three o'clock. And one student sadly ran straight into a guardrail on a bridge, al- almost totaled his car, he was fine and everything. But I mean, just the, you know, that was a huge hazard and a harm and I'm fairly certain that cannonballs was prom went off very smoothly. So, I mean, just, it was very good that, you know, all the buses went well and everything, grand march was fine, no problems there. So that was, you know, a big benefit that we didn't have to deal with someone driving 3:00 AM at night and, you know, not paying attention to the road. Also, on May eleventh, we have a band concert this Thursday, so you can come out and listen to the big band. And then on May seventeenth, we have academic awards for all those who lettered, I think it's 3.3 GPA for three quarters straight. So, and we have a lot this year. And then also community band, another example of the high school, as we heard with the Shepherd Center, is practicing actually, right now we're at seven o'clock, so in ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
Yep. And so they're gonna be there practicing their music, which I think is Pirates of the Caribbean and Magnificent Seven this year, so those are their two songs. And then, um, on top of that, now we can get to some, yeah, onto some sports, we have, um, track conference going on this Saturday. Baseball game is actually happening tonight as well. And then, um, on May twelfth, you guys can cross off your calendars, softball has been canceled, I think, I looked at the boards, I just want to make sure.
Yep.
Yep. And then, um, on May fourteenth, we have the art show and then kind of the last thing to wrap it up, I'm still trying to go fast, is, um, Student Council and FFA FI just like let you guys know about this, is we're trying to deal with, now we're following up with the student activity accounts. And so, um, what we like to do as a student council, as a student-led, we would like to decide where our money goes. So we, for the parent-teacher conference, we want to give the teachers pizza and so they wouldn't have to go out and buy their lunch. And also, we wanted to give the janitors a cake because of all the crap they have to clean up that we leave across the school. However, now that we're looking at the sheet, we cannot do that because it's not going to the students in the account. Even though, you know, that makes sense, the bomber cards, the money shouldn't go to the coaches going up for a summer session that's, you know, out in Texas, you know, and they write a coach bus there for a thousand dollars. But this is, um, student-led organizations, which, you know, stated in consensus that we want to give money to the teachers. And not only is that a problem, but we also have a problem with scholarships. We hand out two thousand dollars in scholarships to students across our school, not in the high school student council. And we're gonna probably do more next year because we have a surplus in our account, but under the regulations, we can't do that. So now, student council is sitting at a fairly large budget that we don't really know what to do with, other than spend it on dances, which doesn't really need any more money. So because of that, we're kind of looking into, I've been talking to Mrs. Gees and Mr. Hodges and Robin, is how we can either try and find a loophole to work our way around this or eventually go to the state and try and change this because, um, the intent is correct, is that, you know, money in these accounts should go for students. But when you look at FFA and student council, which have student-led organizations that wish to have money go in different directions, I think it should. I mean, the great example Mrs. Gees brought up is FFA wanted to give flowers to, um, was it a man that lost his wife or the opposite way around? And he has been instrumental in helping with FFA, but they couldn't even send the flowers because that was, you know, a gift.
From the student activity.
From the student activity account, so they had to raise money on their own, you know, since it's a gift. Or like, we can't give gift cards anymore at dances. I mean, we'll still find chaperones, but the incentive is kind of not there. So just kind of an update on that and how we're working.
It's the same law that allows you, when you go to your conferences, now you can't get something that's over $4.99. Um, the intent of this whole entire thing, and it's actually been in fact for three years, we just started kind of enforcing it because we are looking at policies and statutes. But this, this came around when you saw insurance companies really trying to get out, uh, gifts and things and, and our politicians that were involved in this. It kind of trickled down, the statute was never intended to be this way. Um, we know that these are great causes and Mr. Hodges and I are kind of scratching our head too, like, these are just kids trying to do great things. A lot like our booster clubs, sometimes they're trying to do great things but can't. Um, and there is those statutes that we need to follow. So we're kind of stuck between two places because we want to help Grant and the other students, uh, but we certainly want to follow the statutes that are in place. I can tell you, because I sit on the legislative committee, that there is a lot of talk about this kind of stuff. And I, I do think that they're gonna make headway in making some realistic changes. I don't know if it'll happen this time, I always get real hopeful when I leave those things and then you see what came out the next day and that isn't what I thought at all. So, I could be wrong, but I think they're trying really hard because it's not just student council and FFA, it's actually thirty-six of our student-led organizations. Whether it's BPA or anything like that, um, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, they're all running into these same problems that if anyone was calling you on it, you're actually breaking the law. Um, so it's not Mr. Hodges, I don't want you mad at him or Wildman.
No, I know, I know, we've talked about that because, um, we, we learned from Mrs. Dollin, we know it's not our school district, it's definitely the state's policy. But the leading problem for principals being fired is audit, you know, miscalculations with the student activity fund. With some money not going the right way or paying for a vendor, I mean, we have to take money from the general fund to pay a vendor and then we have to pay the general fund back to get a DJ. If you go straight from the student account, that's a violation and out goes your principal who's been there for a while, so.
And superintendents and business managers and.
You have an entire suite of the administrative district. Burning corn and gracing all out of there.
Surfrush.
Yes, surfrush. So yeah, just to give you guys a heads up, um, you know, I think discussion was the best way to bring it up, just talk about it in the student report. But just so you know that, you know, we're trying to figure that out and help the, you know, student-led organizations get through that, so.
I think it's great you being that proactive in it.
Well, I mean, it, it really is, you know, shackling us down because especially, this is the most money we've ever had in student council, so I'm like, well, I mean, it's my senior year, I can get some of it out, you know, save some for the next years. But, you know, it's kind of limiting the ability to help the school.
I think there are some, some ways, I know at the superintendent level, we're talking about it and I know the A.D.s have talked about some things with coaches, but there's gotta be ways to work around this, I mean, booster clubs have found avenues to, to buy certain things. We just, we need to kind of get united forces and come up with an idea, so we'll get you there.
Okay, thank you, Grant. School board committees, you see the list, has anybody met and got some input on their particular committees?
Um, we kept met and there's a couple of things that we talked about, one was the WTEC, um, general fund is quite large. Um, and they actually are voting on trying, how to invest the monies. And, uh, they have decided that they're gonna invest in, I can't remember the name of the funds, but it's a kind of a co-op. When you say it's at Robins.
Design for schools to invest.
Semtech is looking at it as well.
Yeah, so it's just how we can, you know, take that money and at least earn something off of it, because it's a substantial amount, I can't remember.
I think with some, some fear of E-rate going away with the new administration too, you know, almost too scared to use it, I think investing it is really smart because if that E-rate was to go away, that's what, eighty-two thousand dollars for our district. So, we want to make sure that, you know, we're being careful not, you know, it's good to have a big budget when we aren't sure what's gonna happen.
Right. And then the other thing was, and, um, jump in here, WTEC with Aaron, he's a very busy guy. And, um, almost overworked, he's got five districts that he's working with now. And, um, decided that we'd consider maybe bringing, Aaron would be the WTEC administrator. And then I'm thinking about bringing in an IT coordinator, I guess you'd call it that. And then that would be a two-year position, then also. And then that would be a two-year position, then also an IT assistant. And those, those individuals would actually be developing the programs, you know, the classes that would be offered, kind of structuring it that way. Aaron would oversee all this.
Is this the same Aaron that helps out the technology department?
Yeah.
So he's got a big plate.
Yeah, he's got a big plate.
He does, and, and they're talking about possibly advertising this for principals because it'll be scheduling, which is one of the big things. When you're working five school districts, trying to schedule these classes amongst all the school districts with the teachers and the students, that's a big chunk on his plate and, and as we've talked about, is that a good use of his time? Not really. So that's what really, our focus for the last eight months has been not to overwork Aaron, not to burn him out. He says so far he's fine, but the guy only takes a couple days of vacation a year and he sells the rest back. Our goal really, and same with the superintendent, we, we're creating goals for him. One really is to take his vacation, not to burn it, or not to sell it back and not to create excuses why he can't or reasons. So we're really focused on trying to release his plate so he can free up some more time. And at the same point, I think we'll, we'll get some good scheduling, we'll get some administration possibly involved to help out that. We're looking at a two-year commitment at this point. The first year will be kind of an introduction, the second year they'll take over and we'll see where it goes from there.
And I understood they were kind of looking at a counselor type position because they have the most experience with scheduling.
Yep, one also, one assistant type or principal type to take those two.
That's very affordable for the amount of money that we make through ITV, very affordable and smart to do.
Yeah.
I have a question, who employs him?
Who appoints?
Who, who employs?
It's Aaron.
We Tech.
We Tech.
Combination of five districts.
We Tech is the organization.
Okay.
So the consortium of schools, what is, I was going to ask some of the same question. What is the structure of We Tech? I mean, is there a, is there an Aaron plus three others with just him?
Think of it like a superintendent and he has a school board. He just sit on as the board.
Two members of each district for that.
And then the, the five superintendents, we meet once a month before you guys meet. So he has a student, a superintendent group, he has a school board, and he is the superintendent of We Tech. That's probably the best way to look at it.
He does use the business manager from Zabroda with his budget, so we're not having to hire someone out, it's just a part of the duties.
And he's housed there.
Yep, he's housed out there, he pays for electricity. I mean, he is his own entity within the district, so the service that he buys, the electricity that he uses, he pays for the space, everything on his own budget. And then it's a chargeback really to the districts on what he's able to, to save. And we've been getting some good savings by joining We Tech. I think one of the most valuable things is his, him as a resource for AME, for our tech people. Anything from buying equipment to what's coming up in the future, change that he sees, he is in tune.
He is the CEO of all.
Yes.
I thought he owned that business.
No.
He, we were.
They're contracted with him.
Yeah.
That's, that's what's my thought.
I want to say there's, do you know how many We Tech-type co-ops are there in the state? There's a few.
Oh, there's probably nine, ten. I know Sona is the one we were in previously and I think that one just got so big, we didn't feel that personal touch. I mean, we really weren't getting anything out of it. We were paying a $2,000 fee every year and, and really not having that resource. I think We Tech is really, especially moving our servers offsite, they're now in Wanamango, it's just been really seamless.
So it's Wanamango, Campolos, Zabroda, and where are the other two?
Goodhue. Goodhue.
And so this, do they also do the ITV and do they do all of our structural concerns technologically?
Yes.
And so it's just a technology-based stuff, mainly software focused?
Classes online.
Hardware too, though.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as what our requirements are for hardware to set up.
Wait, do they also help us with when we're buying tablets and stuff or is it strictly ITV?
Um, you know, we, we kind of do the coordination of it, but we will certainly ask his advice. He'll know if a, a certain device has been having problems, he, he really understands the marketplace. He also knows places where to get grants. He's steered many of us superintendents in the direction of grant money, he's a very knowledgeable man.
Okay, and how many ITV classes do we have?
We have three or four.
Well, for the whole.
We teach altogether, there's forty-two, but I don't know if all of them will be a goal. We have different kids registered.
Yeah. All right.
We're offering next year with three, four classes.
There's about two hundred and I think we're down this year, two hundred and twenty students have signed up for this next first semester, I think two hundred and fifty for the second semester.
You have to remember, those are kids that may have, you know, left us for PSCO and things like that. We don't have many students that do that anymore because those opportunities are already here. If it was my own kid, I'd rather have him go down the ITV room than driving to Inver Grove Heights. So for a lot of kids, it really is a good option, you know, you want to take Chinese because you think that's a great thing. Well, guess what, you can have it sixth hour here, you know, works really well.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've got, one of the things that we're, we're going to start working on, I think, a little bit with our superintendent, because we did switch over just a couple of years ago, it was really a good job description for the superintendent because he sat the last meeting, he was honest, what am I supposed to do here? And, and it's a good question.
Aaron said that?
Nope, superintendent who sits in it is.
Jeff Peschett is this year, but it'll rotate next year, I, I think I have three years till it's my turn.
He's done a nice job.
He does, and I think he likes it, he may stay on, he really does like it.
It, it, it's, it's a good committee to be on to understand a lot of, especially the other districts as well, technology-wise. And even Aaron finding out where we're at technology-wise versus the state and other areas as well.
Would you say we're pretty far ahead compared to our competitors, that we're with in We Tech, really?
Well, not in We Tech. We Tech's better off since.
Our co-op is ahead.
Yeah.
I have a question, I came up at the last, at the last meeting and they said that we are ahead. But other ones?
Almost everybody in We Tech is a hundred percent on the ones. Yes.
Any other committee needs, sorry?
The study's on, actually.
We need to.
Goodhue did need, yeah, Goodhue Ed District met and it's pretty much business as usual, nothing really that affects us too, too much to report, but.
What is the final verdict on the parking lot? Because I, I voted no on that, but.
I don't think We Tech put that in our vote.
What's this?
They, they will be voting, we will be voting. We have to pay for one-eighth, they, Red Wing Schools passed a very large bond to fix their parking lots. And in the agreement with Goodhue County Ed District, we have two strips of parking lot that were ours. And even though they were new and we built it in, they have to be meshed correctly. Thank you, yes. And so they have to do the overlay and they have to tear it all up and we'll be paying an eighth of that. I voted no because I feel like that building was just built and that portion of the parking lot was new and I just felt that it wasn't appropriate way to spend the money. I may lose because it's part of the agreement that we pay that.
So is this to Red Wing?
Yeah, it connects with Red Wing High School, they share kind of a parking lot, but that was the agreement that was set and it, and we may just lose on that. Kevin Johnson is their facilities director and he came over and explained to us and I felt a little better after that, understanding that if you take new asphalt and put it with old, it doesn't freeze well and, and those types of things. So I just wanted to make sure that my vote was a no at this time.
No, we didn't talk about that.
Okay. Darn it.
But it's good for me to be aware of, so. The next meeting is May twenty-fifth, seven PM.
Anyone else? We're moving on to administrative board reports. You have copies of the elementary and middle school, high school reports in your file, in your notes.
Elementary wanted me to point out please number four, it's up on the screen. He wants to tell you one time again that the Math STEM event is Tuesday, May twenty-third. Dinner is provided, so let him know if you are planning on coming. That was the only highlight we had there. Mr. Hodges' father is ill, so he was not here tonight, but you see his attachment as well.
In looking at the middle school, high school report, you know, it looks like they're going to go from STAR testing to Fast Bridge Assessment. What is the reason in STAR testing not?
That's a great question. It's been talked about a lot at the Goodhue County Ed District. We really want to have a data warehouse with everyone on the same exact system. STAR testing is kind of working its way out, it's just not as effective. You want stuff that teachers can use and quickly download. FAST, although we'll have to retrain teachers, is a lot like the FAT, or a lot like the STAR system. They also make the AR Math and AR Reading Program, so it just makes budgeting and stuff a lot easier because you're working with one company versus two. No real reason, it's not that we're unhappy, it's just we want all five districts to be using the same program. So that as Sharon can attest to this, if a student moves around in the district, we all are using the same assessment, so we really know where to put them versus us all using something different.
So why do we, I'm sorry, why do we do double assessment with STAR and MCA? I was just wondering, like, what was the priority to do both of them?
That's a great question too. MCA is really a state assessment, it doesn't give our teachers a lot of feedback, it comes in a lot later. Teachers don't use that for immediate assessment. STAR gives them answers where their students are at the same day. They can actually see the test on their screen as it's coming in. So it's really a, a more valuable tool for our teachers to use quickly.
Okay, thank you. Kate, Jake, Community Ed.
Yeah, just real briefly, I wanted to touch on our Hall of Fame and Senior Athlete Bank that we got last night. It was our third year of doing it and it was another great year, it was really fun. We authored a couple of new awards this year for our senior athletes. We, one of the awards we gave out this year was a Senior Leadership Award, which the criteria is a bomber athlete who's used their platform in athletics to make a positive impact as leaders in the community. And our winners of that, we had a tie for the girls, Annika Tomlee and Alana Robinson, and Jake Christensen won it for the boys. We also honored five senior stars, which our criteria for that was you have to have a cumulative 3.0 GPA, a three-sport athlete and not have any statistical violations in your career. We have five boys, all boys that earned that one, Jake Christensen, Carlton Lindo, Mason Grimes, Kobe Votz, and Andrew Eggy. And then we also honored a male and female athlete of the year and Carlton Lindo and Sandra Ray and Chaylon Lewis. So it was a really fun night, it was good to honor those seniors and then not to mention, or not to forget about our Hall of Famers. We had nine Hall of Famers going last year, plus the first team in Campolos history to advance to the state tournament in the nineteen ninety-two girls golf team. So it was a really fun night, we had close to two hundred people attend. It's kind of been our number the last few years, it was about two hundred number, the cafeteria was full. Wendy Robinson did a great job with the meal and he can help out printing our programs. Beth and myself and Bucky Lindo and Melissa Hughes have put this together three years ago and it's been a really fun night.
Jake, you like to give the credit to other people. I don't know if you're all aware, Jake, this is his brainchild. He started this, you developed this, you deserve a lot of credit. And two separate people from the community approached me afterwards and just said, Jake did a great thing for our community. You brought people of all ages together and should be very proud of that. You like to give a lot of credit to other people, this is, this is your thing.
Thank you, I've had a lot of good help, but it's been really fun, really proud of it actually. You've probably seen the plaques that are now hanging by the gym. I think it's just, I mean, it's, I've learned so much about the rich history here, you know, we might not have a lot of state champions, just, we had some really incredible individuals and some teams that have done some really cool things. It's really kind of brought those to light and kind of brought that back. It's fun to see previous Hall of Famers come back forward, they look forward to it, you know, and I had three people from last night emailing me saying, hey, it was a really fun event. And three of our Hall of Famers from last night, so. Really, like I said, I'm really proud of it, it's been a really cool thing, so every maybe helps it, so that's all I have.
Kate, head of operations, not here, didn't give us a report.
You'll, you'll hear some other things as the date goes on here.
Okay. Technology, again, there was an attachment that you've all had a chance to review. Super, super report?
Yeah, you know, I'm not going to add anything on, some of the big things are keeping me really busy right now, is the legislative session. We're really working on some teacher shortage things, I've sent that out to you. There's a four-tiered system that they're really looking at, four being the standard teacher you're used to, three being, you know, a teacher that maybe didn't teach in that area. They have a special ed license but want to teach math, those kinds of things. So they're a trained teacher, but maybe not in the content area. It's one and two that are getting a lot of conversation right now. I'm very supportive of tier two, I think it's a great opportunity for an engineer to come back and teach math or science for us, but doesn't have that teaching background. I think we've got strong administration here and leadership that can help them foster, you can tell if someone can teach or not. And then the, the last tier unfortunately is the one that has a lot of arguments. It's people that can't maybe find a job but want to sub or something like that. And, and as teachers, I think we, we don't want that diluted. You can't be a nurse just because you know how to put on a Band-Aid. There's a, there's a lot of things we want to be able to do, but we don't know how to do. To say a teacher doesn't need training is kind of an insult to the profession. There's a lot of us kind of pushing back on one, I know there's a shortage, but not everyone can be a teacher. So we'll see where that all goes, I know they're really trying to work on a lot of things, there's a lot of loan forgiveness things. You can read the budgets, I'm not going to get into any of this here. One of the biggest things that you're not seeing on the agenda tonight that was supposed to be there was your proposed budget. I'm still working on it, Josh and I are sitting down. We have called every kindergarten parent we have, we've got an interesting situation on our hands with sixty-two kids enrolled in kindergarten. We have a lot of open enrollees coming to our school and we're very lucky to have that, we're a desired school. People, and Rob will probably shake his head at this, are having trouble finding a home to live here. And so the projected budget is going to have to hold off a little bit until I can move some things around that isn't anything alarming. There'll be other kids, they tend to come in first grade and things like that, but we don't have kids leaving us. So they, you know, kind of ease your minds there. We just have an interesting bubble group that's, that's going to be.
Is sixty-two small or big?
It's very small.
Very, we usually a hundred?
About a hundred, a hundred would be our normal number. So we'll just want to look at that, give us a little time, it was supposed to be on your agenda tonight. Realistically, you don't need to see it till June, I'm kind of one of those people who have to get it done early, but let's wait a little bit and see where things go. We'll also know where the state goes with all this legislative stuff. And I, I think that'll be really helpful when we go into negotiations and as we prepare for the budget. So stay tuned, but the rest of it is kind of on here, I don't need to go through it.
Kate, public input, does anyone here have any statements, concerns that they would like to share with the district about district function? We're moving on. Rob, we're supposed to pretend like the place is packed.
You in the back.
Yes. All business, we have none showing under new business, consideration to approve the seventeen eighteen resolution for membership of the Minnesota State High School League, it procedural thing, correct?
Yeah, do it every single year just so we can participate in state high school league activities and postseason events. So you have this procedure thing.
Kate, we need a motion in a second to approve it and Brenda will read the resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? Kate, Brenda?
Okay. Just that top section. Resolution at the governing board of school district number two fifty-two, county of Goodhue, state of Minnesota, delegates the control, supervision and regulation of interscholastic athletic and finance events, referred to in Minnesota statute section one two eight C point oh one to the Minnesota State High School League. And so hereby certifies to the state commissioner of education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Okay, Kurt.
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda? Yes. Katie?
Yes.
And Rob?
Yes.
Kate, that passes by a six-zero vote. Item two, consideration to approve a ten-cent meal increase, price increase for seventeen eighteen.
Yes, we're still, you know, kind of working on the presumption that we need to get to a certain dollar amount. If you feel more comfortable with a five-cent increase, we're okay with that. I did attach some news articles, I'm not sure if you were able to open any of these. A lot of these changes that you're seeing were, the former first lady really had a lot of influence on what's for school launches. I foresee a lot of that changing. The commissioner of agriculture has already pulled back some of the, the current, currently Grant gets nine hundred and twenty calories for every meal, you know, those kinds of things. I see that a lot of those things changing. So with that said, you know, a five-cent increase would get us where we need to be, a ten would also get us where we need to be. Last year, if you remember right, you decided to do none, we decided to kind of keep it in place. So it's kind of up to you what you'd like to do, but we do need to continue to go with food cost increases and five to ten cents would accomplish that.
Is there any like inflationary issue since we didn't do it before or is it just, just in your policies?
Not necessarily, food costs actually going through Reinhardt Foods and the food co-op that we go through, we've seen some decreases in that. The big thing that's going on right now is we do have a dishwasher at the elementary that is on the, oh, should I say, you know, twenty years old and it's just starting to age, so are some of our freezers. So this money also allows you to buy equipment for Wendy's department.
And how do we, how are we sitting in that account, that budget right now?
Uh, you're down a little bit, but that is because the freezer broke and we did have to buy some parts for that. You can't make money in food service and I know you all know that, I'm just reviewing it maybe for Katie, the new person. We can't have a balance in there, but we do charge back for some of the electric and things like that, so the account is fine.
How much about it there?
Um, three to four thousand dollars and that's pretty much where you want to end the year. That's, that's a good place to be, but that would be after that, those bigger expenditures. I can certainly pull that up and email that information to you as well.
What's the number we want to get to, that we have to get to for meal prices that you said?
It is a dollar so, I, I would have to get back to you. I think it's a dollar sixty, but I don't want to, I don't want to.
No, you know, probably.
It's in here, it's in your packet.
Or was it from the side?
No, that's okay, I saw it. No, that's okay. I saw it. You know, if Lori was here, she would know the answer. Um, required price will eventually have to get to 255.
What, 160 now you said? Okay.
But again, you're not really sure, you know, if you're required by the state, they would say a 2% increase. I don't know if that's right.
So the 255 is state mandatory or?
It will be when we get to that, if it stays in effect. Again, we don't know what the new legislators are gonna say.
And so what's the purpose of that? Is that just for the school district or what's the purpose of that?
You're in a federal food program, so they want schools to be kind of united and everyone charging the same because you are getting a federal subsidy. And so when the Department of Agriculture sets those subsidy prices, you want to make sure things like schools and perhaps hospitals...
Aren't keeping it cheap so they get extra money out of it or something like that?
Maybe. You'd have to ask them.
So last year we did none.
That's correct.
What's your pleasure?
I guess, you know, I already answered the question. What do we currently charge? 160?
Um, per meal?
Yeah, ask a mom.
It's two something. I know that it's 240 something.
Was it 10 cent cap?
Is it 241?
It's right here. Lunch they pay at 245 and breakfast is 235. Lunch is 245, breakfast is 235. We do have, remember, we do serve breakfast and lunch.
Right. So we're not...
So, no, is this across both meals or just lunch?
It is, right here. It says underneath, you'll see students for a year that only take lunch, and then we gave you the number for breakfast and lunch. So for each child, if you take breakfast and lunch at the store, it'd be an increase of $34.80.
So if we went up 10 cents, we'd be at the required pricing.
There's nothing in statute right now required. We're just trying to get to that amount. So at the end, we, when this, when we get to that state number, we don't have to do it all at once.
That's gonna be 2017, 2018. The 255?
For next, next one here.
And that's just the weighted average price requirement.
2018, 2019.
My recommendation to you would be an increase of either five or 10. I wouldn't go any more than that, but I also would sit at zero. We do need to have this equipment paid for. There's, there is a reason for it.
I'll make a motion to approve 10 cent meal price increase.
I'll second.
Motion by Brenda. Seconded by Jerry to approve a 10 cent meal increase for 1718. Other discussion?
I think it's with, without having an increase last year. I think in the past, it's normally been about a five cent, three to five cent increase the last, since I've been on board. State passed last year. I don't know that 10 cents is on the line.
So are we looking, I guess, just on clear, are we trying to hit the 255? Or are we just trying to make sure we stay above?
We are trying to get to the federal amount of 255.
By 2018, 2019.
That is correct.
So if we go up 10 cents...
Then next year you can...
If you can find the five.
We don't have to go up 4 cents next year. So we could go up 9 cents this year now.
For accounting reasons, I hope you keep it on the five.
Maybe a better view of one year and then, you know, like every other year increase to five and then five.
Suppose it was said you got, you painted every year? Or would you rather pay the least amount possible until you hit that point or double it every other year?
At this point, we have a motion on the floor to approve the 10% increase, and we have no other discussion.
Or we could do a five, a five cent this year and then wait and see if we need to do a 10 cent next year.
Or a five, or a five next year too, right? Because we're 245.
Oh, we have to, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be five, five.
Yeah.
I like that idea, but motions aren't yet out there.
We certainly need to meet the 255 by, we need to, we need to meet that.
Well, I could rescind the motion or we could vote on that.
We can vote it down and just, and roll back into the five. That's what you don't matter.
Should I rescind the motion and change it to five?
Sure. Rescind first.
I'll rescind my motion.
I'll rescind my second.
Brenda, you rescinded your motion and...
I'll second.
And Jerry has rescinded his second.
I'll make the motion that we raise the rates five cents this year.
Motion by Rob for nickel increase. Seconded by Kurt.
Yep.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
Norah, did you get all that?
Yeah.
Consideration to approve the replacement of the compressor.
Oh, good. A topic I know a lot about. I was prepared for Lori to be here on the lunch account, so I must apologize. I will send a summary of, to make sure you guys have all the information. We got four bids. I can pass these around on the compressor. You're well aware of the situation. We talked about it. The facility committee made a recommendation to move forward. The board asked us then to go out and get bids on that, and that's exactly what we've done. The company that we have chosen is actually NAC, NAC, and their final bid was $14,993. There is an item up there that some built it in, and you can pass those around for an additional part that may be needed when they get in and take the compressor apart. Some built it in, but still even with that, their bid came in the lowest. So I feel confident and Dave feels confident working with them as well.
I wonder if Jerry could give us the Cliff Notes on the compressor and what we're doing here.
The reason that it's being replaced is when they're touring the facility, gathering information out of the equipment, they found that one of the compressors completely failed and leaked oil. And as the unit for the auditorium, so it's for the cooling for the auditorium. What else do you need to fill? It's, it has to be replaced. If you want cooling in the auditorium, you have to replace the compressor.
Dave talked about it last time. We just didn't have the bids in place, so we, you told us to come back with those, so it's a brief one.
And these compressors sometimes they'll last for 20 years, sometimes they'll last for 20 days.
Yeah, and they'll have a year warranty on it, but those were put in '09. Still kind of surprising to see one fail this early and the root cause, it's any of these guests. We've seen units that have lasted for 20 years and I've seen units that fail every other year. For why, I don't have any idea.
So a totally different unit compressor?
And we need caution about working on those units as there's basically two compressors per circuit. And there's two circuits, so there's really four compressors. And when one fails, if it fails what they call ground it out, it creates acid. And whoever does the repair doesn't check to make sure there's not acid in the system. Because if they don't check and there is, what will happen is the other compressor will go. So you're looking at another $14,000 or $15,000 to repair that one.
So who's, who's responsible for maintenance on something like this?
Well, the, the school district would be and ultimately, they're in the process of the facilities and...
We're looking at some preventative maintenance.
Yeah, preventative maintenance. And that's, that's not necessarily gonna prevent that from happening on a compressor. You'd hope that it helps your equipment run where it should and get the efficiency out of it that it should. And when they do the preventative maintenance, they're checking all the, putting the gauges on, making sure their refrigeration and the heat transfer work should be, but that's not necessarily gonna guarantee a compressor won't fail. Problem is it's mechanical. It's mechanical, so it is gonna fail.
So the bids, were they pretty true? I mean, I saw one with, one with an add-on.
The other ones had it built in. The NAC group did not know for sure if they were needed, so they didn't feel, they felt it was better to put it as a separate line item. Even if it is a go, that's what Dave did. He calculated, even if we needed that add-on, it was still less. Not by much. All four bids came in quite close, very close.
I think for the most part, he tried to make it as apples to apples as possible.
He did, he did a nice job with that.
If you don't specify what you're looking for, you're gonna get big time apples and oranges, which we've seen before here.
Now, is it one type of manufacturer, one manufacturing for the compressor? They use it all specific?
No, you have to replace, so I'll use, let's use Copland compressor, for example. If there's a Copland compressor in that unit, you need to get a Copland compressor. So all these bids, I would be, an educated guess would say the compressor that's being invented, all, all four of them, are the exact same compressor from all four.
Okay, hopefully we won't have to go up this quick again.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, okay. Well, NAC was the low bid, so what's your, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the replacement of the compressor for $14,993 through, what is it?
NAC.
NAC.
With the possibility of a add-on?
KEXP replacement.
That's still built in. It'll, no matter what, it'll be under $20,000.
Kurt made that motion.
I'll second.
Katie seconded the motion. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All abstained.
We have five yeses and one abstention. And that passes. Okay, consideration to approve a resignation.
Yeah, I'm really excited to report that Julie Roundtree, if you've had the opportunity to meet her, just a delightful woman, taught EBD and some of our special ed services down at the elementary. She has decided to resign, but with full intention to come back and subbing next year. She's really excited to kind of travel a little bit, but sub when she can as well. And we're very fortunate that she is dedicated to Cannon Falls schools and wants to continue to work here, just maybe in a different capacity. So we, we wish her the best of luck and thank her for her service.
For the motion. Jerry on the motion? Second?
I'll second.
Brenda, seconds? All in favor of the approval of this resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to post and hire for this position, one O special ed teacher. Speak for itself.
Okay, slow to debate.
I'll make a motion too, Chris.
Brenda on the motion. Katie, would you second?
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the Dylan Johnson 44 scholarship. Much of the time, we just end up approving scholarships very gratefully. This was one of our own young people who died prematurely. I've, I've asked Kurt if he would read that.
Sure, this is a letter sent to, from Deb Clegan, and it's sent to Beth East and the board. It states, "The family of Dylan Johnson would like to offer a new scholarship to a member of this year's graduating class. This new scholarship will be awarded as follows. The Dylan Johnson Number 44 Scholarship. Families and friends of Dylan Johnson would like to award one scholarship of $4,400 to a deserving member of the class of 2017. Dylan, a 2011 graduate of Cannon Falls High School, died as a result of a vehicle accident. Dylan lived each day to the fullest. His passion was demolition derbies and his car number was number 44. In honor of Dylan, 44 of his friends and family members each gave $100 towards this scholarship in remembrance of him. This new scholarship is for a graduating senior who will be attending a technical college and has plans to pursue, pursue a career in the trade fields which include truck driving, carpentry, mechanic, or any ag-related vocation. The scholarship is based on financial need and career plans. The scholarship will be selected by the industrial technology instructor and counselor." And it says, "Upon approval from you, I will add this to the other, other local scholarships being awarded to our graduating seniors." Thank you.
So are we looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Hi, Rob.
Rob on the motion? Second?
I'll second.
Carrie on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Update on the tennis courts.
Let me compose myself. If you would just start that, that would be great. Thank you.
Jake, maybe you'll insert that.
Yeah, Facilities Committee meant two weeks ago now, or 10 days ago now. And, you know, we've talked about the tennis courts at length and, you know, it's gonna be the Facilities Committee recommendation that we actually close down the south four courts and for our tennis team this fall to play a complete road schedule, not host any events and just practice on the one side. That's our thought. We don't feel that they're safe for competition and playable. I mean, the cracks would certainly affect the tennis balls if they're hitting and stuff like that, so. That's what the Facility Committee came up as a recommendation. And I gave a heads up to our opponents for next year that will look to play at your school if they're willing to host us.
So how long is this file before this plan of doing one? I mean, we're gonna have to be dealing with this next year. Like what's, I mean, I mean, it's still a long way off to create a long-term plan.
Yeah, it's certainly not good for the program, you know? Those senior girls, it's unfortunate that they're not gonna have any home matches, but plus to send them on the road every day for seventh graders, eighth graders to play on the road instead of having a home match at 4 o'clock or 4:30. It's not gonna be great.
You can, I know that it's probably already planned out, but is there any possibility of playing in the field house with those? Is that just not, the lines and all that?
Yeah, I know. I don't think that, even if we, you know, because there is some talk of only redoing four of them out here and getting it done. But you really can't host with just four courts, even then be even fewer in the field house, so.
Sure.
It's actually been years since I've seen tennis courts set up in the field house. I'm not sure how often that actually happens anymore, but it just wouldn't be enough to host, but.
Even with all the other, I don't know if you can host one in the gym. I don't know how big that is.
19, 20.
I'm just looking at, can you get eight up to it, actually?
Yeah.
Whether it be in different areas.
It's something we could look into. I don't, I don't, I don't know if this, I don't know about the surface, whether you can do it. I learned that you can actually play on artificial turf. Have some schools actually do that, but... I would think that a wood surface would be, I don't think they'd let you play on a wood surface. I'm not 100% sure about using the field house as a competition surface either, so. But something to look into.
I can give you an update on the, the idea of a, we went for a grant. We met with the Public Works Committee and Member Cedar was great in giving us an idea and one of the grants that we could write. And so I, I did write that and did talk to the company, and it looks like we would get the full amount. If we were to submit because of the condition our, our things are in, the full grant is $20,000. So it, it really is meant to be more of a tie-over and get you to that, even when you're really close to the end. We need $288,000 to do this right and to fix it completely. And so we're kind of stumped too. We've had six meetings related to the tennis courts, and each time we aren't sure exactly what to bring to the board for you to even vote on. I think the solution that we came up with was the best that we could do, saying, "We'll play one more year. We'll do away games. We've got this north side that we can practice on. The community can still use the north side this summer." But we really are just kind of torn on what to do. I sent an update to the people that were on that committee from the grant lady after I met with her. She was very, very helpful. They're extremely good advocates for finding other avenues for money. But, you know, the city's kind of in a situation right now that they don't have the funds, we don't have the funds. They aren't quite sure what our next step will be.
Have you, have we looked at just what concrete would be like for cost? Have we had anybody in there for that? Because there's concrete too, and I was just asking around, I, and just wondering if that might be an option.
I'm not sure. That'd be a good question for Dave. I know he, I'm, I'm almost positive that he's looked at his asphalt. And I'm not sure if he's pursued that at all yet.
Might be something to look into, you know, especially as different, as long as expenses are that high, maybe look at what other options might be.
Yeah, I don't, have you found that's a viable surface or not?
Yes, I did some research on it and they're saying that actually for resurfacing that that might be the choice. But again, there's, the cost is probably gonna be pretty close to the same because you can do it just slab on grade and then they do a extension. And that's cost more where you don't have any stress joints in there. And, you know, you can cut stress joints into them. They're gonna be fine. But the, I guess if you go for it, if you're really gonna spend the money, you really want to see if you want asphalt for maybe 15, 20 years or concrete that would go for you in 50 years if you do it right. But it's a, it's a higher, it could be a higher cost depending on how you approached it, you know?
Jake, why is the HVL in your groups when you talk to them, why is tennis going away? When it's such a lifelong skill, we teach it in PE classes, why are there no teams to play anymore?
I honestly don't know.
Is this the reason at the expense of keeping tennis courts?
Is this the reason at the expense of keeping tennis courts?
It could be, but it's a very inexpensive sport as well, and no judges, no takers.
To run it, it's very inexpensive.
Yeah, I mean, we're paying a coach, that's what we have. I mean, they, you know, they get, they buy tennis balls and stuff like that, but I don't know. I don't know anybody who's dropped tennis.
It just seems like we don't play that many different teams. It's very unique that we have a tennis team.
The four in the conference besides us, and we include Winona Carter in the conference still, because they don't have anybody in their conference who plays tennis their size, but you know, we used to have boys tennis too, and that's been gone for
You've got huge numbers in those little tennis camps. Are you still running that this summer?
We will, yeah.
You're gonna use the north side for that? Then how many kids do you get in the tennis camp?
You know, he's doing one this spring, and the numbers are, I mean, they're about ten per grade, which would be great if we had ten sixth graders next year, it would be great numbers for tennis. Or ten seventh graders, but, and then he does a summer camp, so overall, he's getting, you know, ten per grade for a couple of different grade levels, so. He does a good job running summer camps, and the kids like, and they sign up for it. And we let them participate as sixth graders too, so we try to grab them on it, but it's a, it's been a successful program. You know, we had two girls play in the state championship match two years ago, and every year, they run into Rochester Lovers in the section final. And twenty years in a row, Rochester Lovers has gone to stay out of section one, and probably eighteen among them were runner-ups, so. It's unfortunate, but we've had a good program.
Do we have to look at the reality of not continuing with girls tennis and reducing the number of courts that then would fit for our recreational adults in town?
I don't know if that's a good solution. Right now, our numbers, Title IX wise, we're, we're okay, but if we take away the twenty-four girls who are playing tennis, and they say they don't play anything in the fall, then you're out of compliance, and you gotta find something else for those girls to do, and like I said, tennis is a fairly inexpensive sport to run. You're paying as a coach and some, buying some tennis balls, so. You know, you could run the cross, you could charter the cross, but you're buying all helmets and sticks and all that stuff, you can
It doesn't draw the same as a tennis crowd does for game wise.
Yeah.
And does the board understand that it isn't the number of sports you have, it's the number of participants? Does everyone understand that?
Yeah, we actually have more female sports than male sports. Now that we don't have boys tennis, and we have dance team, but there's still more boys participating than girls.
So there's no plan to do any maintenance for the next year in next year's budget?
We'll carry over the forty thousand dollars that we had originally set. The original bid was right around forty-two thousand dollars for the sealant. We used some of that to remove that retaining wall, because they said if we relieve that pressure and that water could drain. The idea behind that was that that'll stop some of that erosion that's happening underneath. It certainly helped. I don't think it stopped it. If we were just to reseal all of them, it was seventy-two thousand dollars, so take that in half, would be that north side if you wanted to reseal that. The companies that have come out, tell me when I start saying something incorrectly, said that if they were to do it, they would have no guarantee on it. So you may be throwing away that thirty-five thousand dollars just to seal the north side. My advisement would not be to do that. If we can't even get a warranty out of someone, you know, why would we move forward on, on resealing it?
Is it something you could have as a referendum or share with the city?
That would be a bond, and we certainly could do that. We talked about that at our meeting too. Strategically, you would not wanna get that bond very close to the renewal of your referendum, which, believe it or not, will be here before you know it. You never want an operating and a bond to be coinciding with each other typically. But it's very surprised, Red Wing surpassed their building bond, you know, to fix their, you know, their, their concrete and things like that. It passed up with flying colors, so.
If it's something specific that benefits the community, and if the community uses, I think, have a good chance of passing.
I still have yet to hear in, from anyone in the community. I don't know if it's just maybe they don't know what's going on. You know, one of the things I wrote in the, the notes from the person with the grants, she said the biggest thing you could do right now is have the community leave this, or have even the tennis team leave this. To have this as a, a district-wide coming down is really a bad way to do it. That was her advisement. And she's one person, but that, that a community group really needs to move forward, come forward with some organization on this too.
How about for the people on the Facilities Committee, and Jake, you know, you look at that north court, it doesn't look like there's as nearly as much structural damage as the south court. Is it worth at least cleaning out those cracks and filling them in for this season so that it doesn't get worse? I mean, because it's gonna get worse.
Preemptive stuff?
Well, I think what the solution would be is to bring a back hole in there, tear everything out, and redo the substructure, so.
But do we know that that's structural damage for sure? Have they done core studies, and are we just assuming that this is based on the person that came in, or?
There's only two companies that came in, and they both said that.
I think, yeah, and I think, I wish Dave was here to answer that, but I think that's what they came from, those contractors.
My question is, do you know that that north structures, structural damage, or is that just asphalt that's given way after years of water getting in there? The south end looks like it probably is, but I would, I would certainly consider maybe someone coming to a bore study on that before we take it, not saying that they're dishonest, but we're taking an opinion of someone's coming in and wants to do the job.
And they may have wanted to do that, and we told them to hold off. I don't know. Dave has been working with them, so.
Yeah, and that, that brings me to the next question. If we're gonna continue to do this for the next year or two, or we're just gonna use that court, do we fill those cracks in? They're gonna separate, but they aren't gonna be a hazard to someone tripping and rolling an ankle in it.
I think what he does in the past, the, they take, there's a sand fill that they fill the cracks with.
Sure.
And I know it's been done in the past.
Okay.
And I would guess that Dave plans to do something with it.
Yeah.
Not just put a cock gun to it, because that doesn't, it never stays, but remember, there's a sand filler that they put in.
So that could be a cost that we need to look at going forward here?
But that would be relatively inexpensive. It's been a thirty or forty thousand dollars to get a resurface that's no warranty.
Does someone like, one of these people like come in and resurface, you know, asphalt parking lots, come in and run some shots of, you know, asphalt?
Well, Dave would know that. I don't know.
I think it's just something that's worth looking at, just, you know.
But I do think that, I mean, I was up here last night for a holiday, thinking there are kids out there playing last night, and I know there's talk of a leave this summer. I'm not sure if that was gonna come either way, or whether that was gonna happen, but, and there's a warning group that uses it quite often in the summer, so. I do think once word gets out there that these aren't safe anymore, the community will come together, so.
So we've had some idle conversation with the city. We had a sit-down meeting with them, and there's no commitments either way. Some of us recall when those things were put in, that the school would be involved with the regular maintenance, the year-to-year maintenance. And major things that would go on. I remember them to be the city being a partner with us in that. But there's no documentation. It was a conversation that occurred whenever these went in, whenever the ones at the swimming pool went out. So, do you have any updates on that conversation? Have you met and talked to anybody since, or was it just?
Just that update from the, the grant people.
So the city hasn't said no to sharing this, but they haven't said yes.
You were at the same meeting. The last conversation I had was the one you were with me at.
Yeah, I'm just trying to draw it out here so we can have that. So, what we're looking at right now is a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar bill to completely refurbish those courts. And there's a possibility of a twenty thousand dollar grant, and we have forty thousand dollars in our kitty that we earmarked for this.
That's correct. That is a correct statement.
So at this point in time, this is more of a discussion action than an action, right?
When do we need to make a final decision? Since, I mean, we have a plan for next year, so it's this like long-term, you know, I mean, I don't know why I'm pushing the long-term right now, but
This is to get us through this year. There's a separate committee that is working on a backfield improvement project. There is a ton of community members involved with that, a lot of coaches. Jake and Dave are kind of co-chairing that. We would really like to have the backfield just have some improvements, the possibility of moving
So that's sooner than the full reconstruction, still like a year off or two?
I think in town, that's been decided, it would really be premature to say what we want to do with tennis courts, because if we were to go with a bond or anything, we'd wanna have that all put together. We have met with some architects that are putting together prelim, no cost, just kind of putting some things together to see what that would look like, to put lights out back, to possibly resurface the track, because that's in, in need already. A football field to give it another opportunity, another, a field for people to play on. All of those things would be really premature to talk about tonight, but that's why we're kind of putting the tennis, that's okay, the tennis courts on that topic. And so when they're ready to present, and when the architects are done with those things, and we have something to present to you, you'll be the first people to see it.
You know, I share Kurt's reservations, I guess. When you get a couple of sales reps come in and they say, "This is what you need, and this is how much it's gonna cost you." Wouldn't it behoove us to at least look into that?
All right, why don't you talk to Dave about that, and are those boards done, at least? You know, there'll be some costs associated with that, but at least we'd have the, the correct answers.
And the information. It's like septic systems, the inspectors, not the installer.
Yep.
Yeah? The entire system needs to go.
Exactly.
Okay.
Or, I think the cracks, I don't know, Paul uses those as advantage. I told him, he'll, he'll tell the kids hit the balls to the cracks.
So they bounce out?
Yep.
Moving, moving forward.
Really?
Pickleball court lines at the CCC.
Yeah, this says update. We actually are looking for a little bit of approval from you tonight, so I will be actually asking for a motion on this. We have a great, as you saw earlier today, a great relationship with the Shepherd Center. They have a very active pickleball organization going on. We've met with them. They charge their players, whether you play once or you play all year, twenty-five dollars to put the lines down. What we would like to do is charge the community ed rate, which is eight dollars per adult. They have agreed to that. Out of their twenty-five dollar fee, they are going to pay the school to run that. So with that, my recommendation to you would be to go ahead and put two pickleball courts on both ends. Not the third one in the middle, and that is mostly to appease our dancers. They would like a center that's clean. I guess that means something to dancers, to not have lines in the center. And so we will have a pickle court on the east and the west ends, but not in the middle. They were wonderful to compromise with us on that. It will be sealed over. We hope that this fad doesn't go away, because it'll be there till the next time we seal it. There was some talk of our fiscal education department being able to use those, because they also play pickleball. They're able to put down temporary lines in the fieldhouse, so they would not be using the ones at the CCC. But we really think this is a great opportunity for anyone. Jake also talked about opportunities for him. He could run a pickleball, you know, we would have the courts available if someone wanted to rent it for a pickleball party or something like that. According to Ms. Shapie, there are such things, so it's quite competitive if, if you're in a city, so. My recommendation would be, we, we had a good facilities meeting over it. Jerry, do you have anything to add?
Biggest part of it is, right now, they're using tape to the floor.
Peels it off.
And it takes off the coating, the finish. So now that we're at a point of taking off the top coat, we can inlay the new pickleball lines, and there will be tape on the flooring later.
What's something like that cost?
It's about four hundred and eighty dollars to lay it down, so we figured the eight dollar fee covers that. We also made kind of a, I think we called a gentleman's agreement. We are going to start using a little more, remember when they wore the vests at games, and they were kind of in the fieldhouse and things like that? And possibly taking tickets and things like that. We're gonna have that sign-up sheet going around a little bit more. It worked out really well in the beginning, and then it kind of slowed down. We're, we're looking at having that come back again, but Shepherd Center's just been such a great relationship. I think you saw by the presentation tonight, all the things that they give to the school. I think this is a really easy way to give back to them and to our community. I hate to say it's for the Shepherd Center, because it's not. Anyone could use it. But they would be the main users. We thought the eight dollars is a fair, that's what you pay to take any class in community ed. It pays for the lines. It just seemed like such a logical solution, so when we met with the Shepherd Center people, they agreed. Jerry, Jake, and I, and Dave, we all agreed, so. My recommendation to you tonight would be to go ahead and lay the two pickleball courts at the CCC.
When you talk about resurfacing that, are we stripping that down to the bare wood and then reapplying all of our lines for all of our sports?
No, not, no.
Yes.
Just taking down the, the seal, wax and the seal is here, and then you can paint it.
There's a difference.
So if you ever wanted to take the paint off these lines off, they'd have to sand it completely down. I asked Dave that question, it's the only reason I know that too, so.
Do we have so many lines there that there's more confusion?
I, yeah, I, I tried to kind of show them a little bit, because you already have volleyball lines and basketball lines, the main court, and then the two side courts too. So there'll be, there'll be some more lines in there, but
Will they be different colors then?
Yeah, we'll make them a different color. I asked Dave if he could do like, I can't remember the term, but like a lighter color, so they're not quite as visible.
Shadowing.
And he said that would probably be a little bit more expensive, so I'm not sure if he was gonna pursue that or not, but they, like I said before, they like that floor down there, our sports teams. It doesn't get used a ton. For our sports team, it'll be more this year for dance, because it doesn't have a ton of lines, tape and stuff like that, but they'll be fine. Yeah, it'll be good then.
They're skilled.
So, yeah, this, this, every year, they should take down that seal and the wax on the court, on that court, and he plans on doing that, then he'll paint, and then he'll put the seal and wax back on.
Can we just redo that floor like four years straight to the flood?
Yeah, yeah, and it was repainted, yeah.
Mr. Holbert, do you have anything?
A couple of things about, Chairman. I think Rod and I have talked, probably give me ten dollars. Twenty bucks, because we've got our equipment built up pretty good, and so we could defray that. We'd also take the monkey off of Jake's back and continue registering through Shepherd Center. We have a system down there. I think it's all set up, and I think it'd be a lot simpler. Anybody could come down and play this, be there twenty-five.
We like that too.
Motion to approve pickleball, pickleball court lines at the CCC?
I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Katie. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie.
Along.
Okay, upcoming meeting, five twenty-two. Approval of the ball head coaches, approval of the proposed budget, hopefully. And anything else that meets with the cause of the board? Anything else before we depart? I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Brenda?
She's gotta get to dance.
Second?
I second.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other discussion? All in favor of the drink, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?